Roll call, please, Mr. Veder.
Naylin.
Here.
Little?
Here.
Belka?
Here.
White?
Here.
Schwartz?
Here.
Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have the agenda as received or amended? It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, the agenda is approved. First item of business is another business, a motion that the travel request submitted by Chris Schwartz, myself, county supervisor, be approved and direct the vice chair to sign for the same for three thousand, for not to exceed, is what it should say, not to exceed $3,020 to attend the NACO legislative conference in Washington, D.C., scheduled for February 28th through March 4th. And as I indicated everybody when I spoke to them, I put in the high-end estimate of the hotels, but I'll be working my best to get the best deal I can to cut that cost down a lot. I attended this last year, I was able to save, stay with friends and save that money, but that's not an option this year.
So, that position you got, the other position you have, that board has set on, is, would they be able to pay any part of it?
It's nothing related to their work.
It's government, right? The one, that's your, you're always on TV with, what's it called?
I, I employ with American Stream Academy, which is not a government agency.
Oh, it's not?
No.
It's a nonprofit?
Yeah, it's a nonprofit.
Alright, somebody asked me why they couldn't, why we couldn't pay part of it that way.
Is there a motion?
And you had explained, I think, too, you're on several, our committee, or I was gonna say, you have some committees that you serve on.
Yeah, the...
What did you, last year was a...
Yeah, so the only, the only NACO committee I serve on is the LGBTQ leaders and allies, but the sessions I'll, you attend will range from everything from, from mental health to jail diversion, I'm looking at, they'll have more information on census stuff as well this year.
I think last year when you came back, you were at a summer conference and you gave us a...
Yep, yeah, I gave, come back, I would be, my plan to come back and give a full presentation to the board again.
And I think we talked about previously, too, that other supervisors certainly have the opportunity to attend.
Absolutely.
They might want to change off, but I know, Chris, you also mentioned that you weren't sure your schedule was going to work, or you would have applied sooner.
Right.
This allowed it an early bird?
Yep, in doing it, if we were able to prove it today, then we're able to still get the early bird registration, right?
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Alright, it's been moved in second. Any further discussion? Alright, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed, motion is approved. Next, we will move into a budget work session, discussion possible board action, consideration of all aspects of the fiscal year '21 budget.
I think we are gonna start off with the proposal that the security committee had come up with yesterday, so we'll start with that and then we'll get into a summary of what we have, what we're looking at, tax askings, levy rates, and end it there, so...
Good morning, Board, Rory Giving, Maintenance Department Lieutenant.
Morning.
So, a few weeks back, the board had asked that the security committee get together and discuss two topics, one was the deputies here at the courthouse, which has already been discussed and, I guess, approved by the board, so the other topic was looking at Pinecrest and security needs for that facility. So, we had met a few weeks back, the committee had met, and the, the discussion started off talking about a recent incident that had happened over at Pinecrest and looking at, basically, the building as a structure, looking at what possible means we could do to make that building safer, and as a committee, we, we kind of focused on security guards, and we looked at, at that point in time, we looked at placing retired officers at that site, which would be essentially employed through the, or managed through the sheriff's department. It was voted and unanimously approved by the committee to go that route and make that recommendation to the board. Afterwards, some further research into that indicated that with the training that was gonna be required and primarily the training to get those officers to where they needed to be was going to be very costly, and so we had another meeting this week to look at possible other options, and we researched our outsourced guards, our Permar Security Services that we have here at, at the courthouse, we had the manager for that company attend the meeting, and as a group, it was talked in great detail about what level of officer that we felt would be needed for that facility, and what we came up with was a, an officer that would have the ability to detain somebody, which is a little different than what you see from our officers here at the courthouse, and it would also have the ability to carry, say, pepper spray, for an example, baton, that type of, that type of defense. The cost for something like this was significantly less than what was originally proposed or discussed amongst the group, and what we're looking at for a full-time guard, forty-five hours a week, that would actually be split up amongst two, two guards, so each guard would work essentially under forty hours a week, so the anticipation is no overtime for this guard. We're looking at approximately $70,000 a year for this service. The other, other aspect of it was DHS, and we, we invited a member of DHS to this committee, and we asked if there was a possibility that the services, the costs could be shared amongst, with the county, and I did receive an answer this morning, right before the meeting, that yes, this is an approved expense, that the state would cover up their thirty-three percent of the fifty-four percent of the cost, so if you look at that $70,000, the state's portion would be approximately $12,500. So, that would essentially put the cost of this service at approximately $57,500 for the year. What we proposed doing was essentially adding the service to our existing contract that we have here with the courthouse, which was just signed here recently, it was a three-year contract. So, if this measure was approved, that service would essentially piggyback onto that contract.
Yeah, you heard the hours, two people, forty-five hours.
One of the contracted service.
Is that a qualification for healthcare?
They wouldn't be our employees.
They won't be our employees?
No, it's, it would be through Permar Security, yes.
Well, Permar would be carrying the insurance on that individual, not the county?
Absolutely, it'd be really no difference than what we have here at the courthouse currently, it's just, this would be more of a, this, this particular guard would be trained in, in different aspects of security.
Is there any liability to the county, if that individual got hurt or hurt somebody?
It's a contracted service, so they would have to have the minimum, they'd have to meet our insurance requirements, which if they piggybacked under that contract, that's all been already negotiated.
You're saying there's no liability to the county if they hurt somebody?
No, that's what we're hiring for them to do, so that, that falls on them.
That's a key component, I think you're putting your neck out there a bit, but that's, that's the reason I asked it.
Yeah.
How much less would it be just to have a guard like we got down here?
So, what we're paying for the guards down here, just one second here. So, we're, we're paying approximately $17 an hour for the guard here. For the guard over at Pinecrest, with the ability to contain and have the pepper spray and the baton and such, would be about $28 an hour.
What's stuff, other than baton and pepper spray, you're talking handcuffs, too, right?
Handcuffs, yeah. Yeah. It wouldn't go to the extreme that this person would carry.
I think if you do more checking, Rory, we'd still be liable in some ways, because it's just like now, if I'm sitting at the stoplight out there and Mr. Truck hits me from behind, I'm just as much responsible for being there, that law, you know, that chip. If I wasn't there, Truck wouldn't have hit me, so...
I mean, I can certainly look into that, but...
Opened up, and what happened, there's gonna be a delay time, if we can, if the gentleman or lady, I suspected it'd be a man, that would be holding this position, especially with, with the demand is out there, that if he confronts someone and gets into a confrontation with him and tries to get the cuffs on, and can't do it, and it turns into something bigger, there's gonna be a lapse time there, that a lot of things could happen, and a lot of bad things could happen.
Yeah, I don't disagree with you.
That's why I think we should just keep it as simple as possible, just like this.
Sheriff, are they, according to law, they're allowed to pepper spray an individual and handcuff them? So, they can do that by law? Okay.
I want to be clear, I think both men and women would be capable of this job.
I, I agree.
One question I had, too, and I don't know if it came up, but a lot of the services out at Pinecrest, whether it be through the state or through the county, is there's a certain extent of privacy and the individuals that go in there, and to me, I would think that some would walk in and see a uniform and turn right around and walk out. I'd be concerned if I was, had certain services there and had a uniformed person standing there.
That, yes, and that was actually something that we did discuss in our committee, we had DHS, management from DHS there, and that was a concern. What, what Permar is offering or what they're suggesting is that the officers would wear what they call a soft look, the uniforms would include polo shirt with a badge, so there, there has to be some sort of identification, but it's, technically, what they claim is it's a softer look, so they don't have that appearance that there's...
Would that individual stay on the ground floor, or would it go up on second, third, fourth floors?
It, the idea behind this is to have this individual actually roam the building to be available.
If it's on the fourth floor and we have an incident like we did a couple of weeks ago on the first floor, it's gonna take a little bit of time to get there?
Mm-hmm, yep, and communication through cellphone is one means, in fact, what they're proposing is, it's, it's similar to what you do at the sheriff's department, where you do your rounds and you check in on each floor, so this individual would have their cellphone, there would be certain locations on each floor to verify that this person is, in fact, making their rounds as they're supposed to.
Like a night watch?
Yeah, and it's, actually, they, they scan their phone on each location that we decide that we want this person to be roaming through the building, so that's the checks and balances to make sure that that's happening.
What would be the procedure for covering VA when they're in a different building?
They would be incorporated into the roaming.
Oh.
You can still access the VA from the...
So, you're gonna have a door that's still accessed?
Yeah, we, we had to leave that there because our handicapped accessible restroom is in the main part of the building, so that needed to remain accessible.
Now, how many back doors, side doors do we have at Pinecrest?
We have, on the north side, the VA department, or the new community center, has two doors, which are alarmed, on the north side, and then we have another door on the north side that's connected to the main part of the building. We have, on the east side, a door that goes directly into the mechanical room, which is key fobbed, and then we have three doors on the south side, which are, include the main entry door, which is obviously unlocked during the day, the door that's further down to the east that has a key fob on it, that's an emergency exit door, and then you have the new VA community center door.
Do we currently have individuals, state or county, using those doors during the day?
There are occasions where on the north side door, that door is supposed to be only used for vendors, for an example, that come and pick up recyclables, that type of thing. We do, we've had problems in the past with employees utilizing that door, and we try to address that when it comes up, but it's, it's, it's similar to what we have here at the courthouse with our side doors.
Have you monitored that lately, too?
It's been a little while ago.
To see if people are utilizing that door, especially in the winter?
I did a study, it's been some time ago, and, and the purpose of my study was to, to kind of evaluate what kind of traffic was coming into the building early, before operating hours, because we wanted to kind of gauge for our snow removal, and what I found is, on a, on a pretty regular basis, you've got about six employees that show up at that facility, anywhere between 6:30 and 7 o'clock, so essentially, you would have employees inside that building before the security.
When's the front door opened up for employees?
For, for the public, that, I believe that door opens up at, it's either 7:30 or 8 o'clock.
So, the employees gotta key fob themselves in in the morning, coming through the...
The ones that come in early, like, they have a key fob and, and then they have to deactivate the, the alarm.
Could you check the records on the other doors and see if employees are using those right now?
Absolutely, yeah.
I think we changed a lot of that when the fobs, when we put the fobs in, we made sure, that was really the reason for the fobs, is try to control that traffic coming in.
We've got employees that have access with those fobs.
We, the only issue, we can control who has access, just like we can control the access to, to our doors here, for an example, the, the door that goes in the mechanical room, we're having a problem with employees cutting through there, because that's closest to the employee parking lot. Since we put that fob in, that problem has gone away, the employees, other than maintenance, do not have access to that door.
Well, we can control the door here, but we're not controlling it.
But it can easily be...
We had an employee, three weeks ago, go through that door, when we had security open downstairs. We informed the department head, and that went happening, and this morning, that employee's going through that door again, and your security's open, it does no good to have security if our employees aren't gonna follow through it. No reason to come through that side door when we're open downstairs, and that individual, hopefully, his security will be yanked off that door, and...
Yeah, and that's one of the benefits of the, the Millennium System that we utilize for our door access, is we do have the ability to manipulate that, and we can lock people out, we can, we could actually shut that door down to all traffic except for the sheriff's department, I know the judges, right now, the way it's supposed to work is you have, you have the sheriff's department, you have the judges, you have the court reporters, and you have the maintenance department, and then the county attorneys have one fob that they'll use to bring witnesses in through that door. That's supposed to be the activity coming through.
Well, this individual has act, has authorization, and he isn't none of the ones you just listed, so...
The, the way, it's kind of, it's, it's not the best process, but we got two, two functions on that door. You have during normal working hours and then outside of normal working hours, in that time of outside of normal working hours, the employees would, would have access to that if they wanna, if they come in, you know, at 6:30, 7 o'clock, I believe that switches over at 7:15, if I'm not mistaken.
They call down there, they're open up at 7 o'clock, is what they told me.
The, the guards, the, yeah, the guards, and what's supposed to happen, if the guards are here and the building is open, people are supposed to utilize that entrance, but we can manipulate that timeframe of what those outside hours are, and we can tighten that window up, which would force people to come in through...
Well, I, I think that you need to check that out there, and then I also think you need to, we're talking a lot of security, I think you need to expedite the key fobs on the doors, you need to get them locked today, I mean, last week. And so, people can't get in them always if them doors are locked.
Yep.
I think some of that was the IT connection, you two working together to get that done, and Kim's been very busy with the Tyler program, it's kind of been...
It's been a combination of both, yeah.
It's a security issue, I mean, it's gotta get, I mean, it does no good talking about guards if we can't get what we implemented, implemented. And the only other thing I'll, I'll say in my last...
I was gonna ask you a question, though, about the door, when you're talking about the door, are there particular positions, not just people, but positions that you think shouldn't be restricted from it? Because we, I know this has come up before.
Well, obviously, the judges are using it, and they say it for security, I, I really don't buy that, because it, there's more activity out here with people, but just regular people are using that that shouldn't be, especially if we're open downstairs, if they come in on their particular job, obviously, before they open downstairs, and I could see that, but when we have security there and they walk right there and come in, that shouldn't be happening, and this is the second time in three weeks for this individual, and so...
So, it's a particular position, I mean, or types of positions, though?
Yeah, in this particular position of this individual, I have no idea why they have access, but they surely don't seem, they need it to me, and if they do, they just blew it anyway, because like I said, they shouldn't be using it during, it, it defeats the whole purpose of sitting here talking about security at Pinecrest, security here, when we already have security implemented here and people are bypassing it, it, it just, it doesn't make any sense. And if we can get our doors under lockdown out of Pinecrest, that's a big plus, because you can get off the elevator, but you can't go down the hallway either way, it's locked, so that's a big plus right there. And then the only thing I'd say on this guard, if he's on the fourth floor and we got a problem on the main floor, it's gonna take some, some time, it'll probably be the same thing, he'll get there about the same time Waterloo or her deputies get there, would be my guess, so... Anyway, that's really all of the comments I had on it. And I thank the committee for working on that.
Thank you, yeah.
We could have fifty security guards out there and fifty here, and you're still gonna have concerns and problems.
And I, you know, I do, I do think that how we set up our, our door access, especially with our external doors, is something that would be a good discussion to have, if, if we want to eliminate access on that side door, with the exception, obviously, of the sheriff's department, that is an easy function that we could do, and if we wanted to look at judges, I mean, those are all things that we, this program has the ability to do, so we can manage this program in a way that meets what, what our goals are.
I understand it, Rory, but this is probably the six years we've been talking about this, so someday we get a quick talk and then just do it.
I, I think the...
If I got a green light, I can make it happen today, but it's...
I think if you wanted, if you wanted the...
We need to get back in this parking lot business as soon as we get done with budget.
If you wanted, I'm, I'm sure that the security committee would be happy to go through and examine who's got access and who doesn't, and if we can limit the hours, so, so people can't bypass the front security, I think we can get that, all that stuff implemented pretty soon, right?
Ultimately, the board's gonna make the decision.
Yeah, a lot of the problem is, is that, that access outside of normal business hours, because we do have a lot of employees that either come in early, they stay late, because you need the fob to get out, also, if you stay after 5:15, or if you come in on the weekends, we have a lot of attorneys that will come in on the weekend.
It's not even part of my discussion.
But what, my point is, the guards are coming in at seven, if they unlock that door, we, what we need to do is tighten that window of what is considered outside of normal business hours, so it forces them around to the guards, if the guards are gonna come in and, and they're predictable at 7 o'clock or 7:15 every day, then I think we can easily manage that, but what happens is you have a little bit of an overlap from when the building technically opens, is supposed to open up, from when it does.
This was at 7:35 for the second time in a row.
Yep. So, I think that'll be a, an easy fix to clarify when those outside of normal business hours are, and force that person to go around to the guards.
Because I think even the county attorney's office, as you said, it gives them an option, sometimes based on daily activities and security and those types of things going on, as we heard some of those the other day, that they're, they might have reasons that they would like to have that use of that door, I just think because of that department, much like the sheriff's office, but we've got some time to think on that. I know that the Department of Human Services, I'm glad to hear that they're willing to participate, but I know they've been a part of the committee and have been involved in some of the conversations previously, and weren't really, not that they weren't willing to pay for it, but they really didn't, they really weren't in support of having security there, so that that's changed, then.
It, yeah, and, and the, the concern that the DHS, and to what Tom's point was, having that appearance of, I don't know, what the institutionalized or something like that, you know, to, they didn't want to scare people, that they're coming into this building and there's an officer standing there, they just felt like that would harden the building, and so that was one thing that the committee did take into account with Permar, and that's, that's why they, they're, they're going to approach this with more of a softer look, and that's, that was, surfaced DHS's concerns, at least at our committee meeting it did.
And I don't know if this was discussed or not, I think it's something we'd wanna certainly reevaluate, and, you know, not just go into it, like, I know we have the three-year contract that we just approved, and I thought it'd hate to just be tied to something like that.
Absolutely.
One thing that was discussed, both that we would reevaluate and add, I believe it was either a three or four month kind of mark, send a survey out to all employees across all agencies that work in the building to get their sense of how it's working, so that, so we do know whether it's, whether it's been a smart investment or not.
I don't think you're ever gonna hear that they want you to pull it back out once it's in there. You may hear that they want you to double it or triple it, is what you're gonna hear. But once it starts, you're never gonna have employees say, "Take it out of here."
Well, but the incidents, I don't know if we've ever tracked, really, the incidents that have occurred out there, how many?
You know, we haven't really tracked it, I, I've talked to a lot of, many of the department heads, and they're, they've kind of reabsolved their own, just, just kind of like what we heard the other day from the county attorneys, there's, there's a lot of incidences that we don't hear, but it doesn't necessarily mean there isn't, is incidences, they kind of take care of them in-house. The one that happened the other day, obviously, that, that was pretty unique, just like the incident that happened here at the courthouse, that got, that was fairly unique, but it doesn't mean that there hasn't been other close calls before, we did have a couple, or we had one a few years back that almost got out of hand, but again, it was handled in-house, so, yeah.
So, I guess we, you know, just have a tracking mechanism in place then to see, I guess, and monitor what kind of situations are going on out there and reporting to us?
I would like to mention there, there are some additional benefits with this guard at the, at Pinecrest, Incident Command, for an example, when we look at our emergency program, our emergency evacuation program, you know, as I was thinking about this yesterday, this might be an ideal position, too, to look at, you know, having this individual play a part in our emergency evacuation program and, and play a part with Incident Command.
Well, it sounds like you worked on this particular issue yesterday, but I think there were other things that came out of that committee in the last week or so, as far as more active shooter training and making sure that, those types of things, too, that all play a good part in this, and...
Yeah, and I, I will say this incident that we keep talking about over at Pinecrest, the one thing that was very impressive, looking back at video footage and just talking to employees that were involved, they essentially all came and said, you know, that, that active shooter training that was given by the sheriff's department, they were so glad that they went to that, because that, that played a huge part in how they reacted to this incident, for an example, they, they got the public in the offices, they shut down the roller doors, looking at the video, it's pretty impressive how they reacted to it, and that was, contributed a lot to the training that was provided, so as a committee, we had quite a bit of discussion on continuing that on a regular basis with all of our facilities. So, I, I was glad to hear that, because...
Because I think we identified, too, there was some reinforcement maybe needed of things we know and we don't do, that we need to practice when those kind of situations come up.
Yeah, and, and one of the other, yeah, structural improvements, enhancements to the building, you know, all of those were discussed, but that would be something I would, you know, take a, take a harder look, obviously, and bring suggestions to the board as we come up with them. but, um, that would be something I would, you know, take a, take a harder look, obviously, and, uh, bring suggestions to the board as we come up with them.
Well, that side door at VA, where, where they go out into the building itself to go to the restroom, that's not gonna be fobbed? Could that be fobbed so that, or buzz, Orlando, where somebody could buzz them so they could go out to the restroom? Make that more secure, because is your front door gonna be locked, or are you gonna keep it open now?
Well, it depends on how, uh, how these wash out.
Okay.
That, that door right now is not fobbed, but it could be fobbed.
Yeah. I think that'd make that more secure, that whole area, you know, if it were situated, because you, we do have, you know, some veterans that get out of hand once in a while, you know, just. Go ahead.
Sure. So, on, on Monday, and that brings up a key point, cause on, on Monday, we should do a better job of reporting, uh, situations that we, we encounter. I, I got three young ladies that work for me and they're still shook up about this, this situation that happened, and, and now they have some doubt about moving to the new facility until we have something in play. And then on Monday, we had a disgruntled veteran who was really just mentally challenged, he was looking for someone to talk to. But he came to our facility by his going out to the hospital. And so I had to, uh, take a client and, and take him out of my office and bring this guy in and just try to talk to him. I had to call down Iowa City and I called out the outpatient clinic, both their mental health areas, just went to voicemail, so that, you know, I was stuck with just this veteran trying to, uh, diffuse this situation. Finally got him to, to calm down by leaving voicemails, and they called him back, but they can't see him till next Monday. So here again is the challenge that we have with our mental health veterans, uh, seeking help but can't get it in a timely fashion. So, security, mental health, all those are very, uh, real for us, um, and, uh, it's a challenge each and every day, and I know it's just not the veterans, it's out there in society too, we have mentally ill people who just don't know what they're doing at a particular time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other discussions Rory, or for the committee on this proposal?
You know, I do like starting at the low end with this, putting a Ken out there. Ken and Nick, when we talk about two, two individuals.
Or Lois.
Ken and Lois, yes, uh, and, and Lois fairly new but doing a fantastic job. Uh, forty-five hours a week, Permar talked about splitting it up between two individuals.
For shift, for type of a shift thing, or?
Yeah, yeah, not together, not two individuals together, but two individuals separately to give us forty-five hours total. But I'd prefer to start at the low end for the sake of, uh, let's see how it goes, cost, and if we need to enhance it, we enhance it.
And I'd like to see us do a better job on that side door, there's been different times that, uh, when I come in, I'll see somebody going in the side door, and different times I've went over and pulled the door without using my fob, and it wasn't locked, and I've told you about that Rory, where, and I think we've got that correct.
We did, we, yeah.
Where it wasn't, you know, where it'd go to a certain point and it'd just stop. I know I was in here last Saturday, and when I come in, I had to pull it shut.
Yeah.
Is there a, a proposal to accept the recommendation of the Security Committee?
I, um, I'm willing to go along with the, the- with the low end on it, but I'm not here to approve anything because we're, they're all words, I gotta see a contract from Permar, cause it's just words, we don't approve words, we gotta have a contract in front of us, and we need a contract from the state that they're gonna cover their portion when the board has those contracts. And if it, we agree with the contracts, then I think that's when we approve it, but to sit here and prove it today?
Well, I, I think today we're trying to make just the budgetary decision, whether this is included.
No problem, but I, we can't approve anything else, cause you've had nothing but words, and we don't make our vote on words.
Okay.
And then Rory, you can see we need contracts with Permar, spells out exactly what they're gonna do out there, the cost, breakdown, blah, 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 and the same thing from the state.
Yeah, I actually have, uh, I have the proposal where it indicates, uh, being, um, placed on the existing contract, so all the terms and conditions, uh, would be essentially followed under the existing contract that we have with this-
We're still gonna have to see something, and then run everything, both of those through Pete too, before they come to the board.
But that was a three-year contract that we just approved.
Yeah, that will expire in two thousand and twenty-two.
But I think what we would need today is a number to plug into the budget. So are you looking-
Forty-five, is that what?
I'd say around forty, forty thousand, I just crunch the numbers, uh, with input from the state, at that level of six or seven thousand dollars, I believe. So total cost to the county, thirty-two.
I think that's all we gotta do is have, uh, James input forty thousand into the budget.
Yes.
Um, and if something went the opposite direction, then we had forty thousand in there, but if it doesn't, we see the contracts, we approve it, and we're off and running.
So to be clear, Mr. President, Chuck, are you proposing something other than what we approved in the Security Committee unanimously yesterday?
Yeah.
I second that motion, pardon at the low end.
Would you repeat your motion?
Uh, allocate forty thousand dollars for security personnel, contract security personnel. Yeah, at Pinecrest.
Yeah, without pepper spray.
Pending approval of a contract with the state and Permar.
Yes.
Not to exceed?
Not to exceed forty thousand dollars.
Well, I, I su- support adding, um, the security to, to the Pinecrest building, but I'm gonna vote no on this, uh, proposal, because I'm going to stick with what we recommended as a Security Committee yesterday, and that was to have, have the ability with somebody with had pepper spray and the ability to detain.
I wanna go back on record and apologize for making a statement about women, I'm just old school and know that there was a perfect example right there, it was talking about three women in a situation, I don't like seeing a woman in a situation like that, that's just the way I, I see things, sorry.
And I know it was commented at the Security Meeting too, that the Sheriff's Department was gonna modify operationally, when a deputy drives by, they'll swing in and walk through, and maybe on occasion, a member of the utility squad is gonna do a walkthrough.
I think Sheriff said he was moving his office out, I'm not sure.
Well, yes, go ahead.
It's called a satellite office.
Um, just a question, I guess, you're talking about supporting what the recommendation was of the committee, which actually included probably several people, do we think that the committee would still support this change, or, or what? Cause wasn't that discussed at the committee?
Yeah, that's already-
Yeah, there, we, we, we discussed that option at the committee, and it was the-
I'm just asking if that was, like I said-
Yesterday was the consensus of the committee that, looking at the case of what happened, that it would have been most effective to have somebody there available within under a minute, which is what the response time would be no matter what floor you're on. It's certainly less response time than a squad car coming, um, that somebody that had the ability to, um, immobilize somebody with, with pepper spray should they need to, and, and detain somebody, uh, would have been what would have been most helpful in that situation. That having, um, the guards like we have here, um, doing the bag check, on which they do a really great job of here, um, would not have necessarily deterred the situation, and that was the consensus of the committee yesterday.
But the committee did send three recommendations to the board, and ultimately, it's the board's decision.
Oh, I know it ultimately-
Yeah, of course, it's the board's decision, but-
But there was three-
No, no, the committee unanimously voted on one recommendation yesterday.
We, we, we got a motion and a second on it.
Yes, I know, it's call the question.
I know, you called the que- I just asked.
I'm just trying to be accurate, I mean, you're-
Thank you.
That's fine.
Just to be clear on that, uh, for the, uh, security officer, someone that we have here, um, there is no ability, they, they cannot touch, they cannot connect with, with somebody, so that would, uh, be, uh, a phone call to the, uh, law enforcement, essentially, is what that officer would, the only-
The two downstairs touch.
You cannot, uh, you know, they can wand, uh, but they're, uh, they're not allowed to contain, I guess is the proper way to say it.
One other thing as long as we're talking security Rory, the other day, the, the system was down, and they were having to go through people's purses, I think we're, we, we gotta do something about that too, maybe we need to just wind the purse and if it goes off, or, you know, getting in people's, and Lois was the one that made the comment, she go, "I'm real uncomfortable sticking my hand in somebody's purse."
Can we go through their purses Sheriff?
Well, if they-
Course, I don't know if you'd want to, you don't know if you're gonna get stuck with something.
Typically what happened, there, it's a, it's a visual, you open it-
Hold it open, they look in?
And if they see something and they go to reach down in there, they could hit them, hit a lot of different-
Yeah, I wouldn't, uh, I, I don't believe that that should be going on, reaching into something, they should just be doing-
Well, that's what they were doing the whole time if that machine was down.
Yeah, I, that'll have to have a discussion with Permar, cause they really shouldn't be touching anything, cause you don't know what's in that purse.
All right, well, we do have a motion and a second, is, are we clear on what the motion is?
Roll call, roll please.
All right, we have a roll call, roll call please, Mr. Peter.
Layland?
No.
Little?
Yes.
Dralka?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Schwartz?
No.
All right, uh, moving on to other aspects of the budget, um, I know we did say on Tuesday, we wanted to try and get more clarification from the fair about whether they, um, had five oh one C three status, I did get off the phone with them just before coming to this meeting, um, and they emailed me their five oh one C three letter for the Fair Foundation, I believe that, that, uh, Dana brought those copies of that letter in, but I haven't seen the letter yet.
Yeah, they are.
Well, it's, yeah, I'll see what the letter says.
You can pass it along, um-
So they're allowed to go out and get money from the public and, and, and have it tax deductible for the people that donate?
If they go through the foundation.
Pardon me, I can't hear you.
No, I said by going through the foundation, apparently, that must be, otherwise they probably don't individually have it.
That's like, uh, I heard someone say the other day about, we don't, we're, did we donate money to, uh, the coalition? Did we get any money there?
Yeah.
And then they vote against, uh, vote opposite of what, what we, we want for this-
Paying lobbyists for it.
Huh?
Paying lobbyists for that commercial tax, they were the opposite.
Grow Cedar Valley?
So we're, we're playing both sides of the river there, which I'm concerned, a waste of money.
So just let her do it, I mean, I guess I don't see anything I don't do that tells you.
That's, that's, I guess that's what, when I, when I was reading it, and when Dana dropped it off, I, I didn't get any more information than we had before.
Well, I think, I'm not sure, we got an EIN, EIN number as a, uh, for Honor Flight, and that's, but we also have an EIN number for our American Legion post, and that's, that's a five oh one, C, nine oh five one C three, uh, veterans organization, so I'm not sure this is sufficient.
I mean, this is, this is what every, um, nonprofit letter I've seen from the IRS looks like.
That's not the ones we send off.
So you're saying this is none, they're all right then?
We've got, we've got proof that-
Yeah.
It's a five oh one C three letter that we sent.
It is, it is my belief from looking at this letter and from what they said over the phone to me today, that the, that the foundation is a five oh one C three.
So it comes down whether the board wants to, uh-
Right.
What was their request, James?
Let me check.
It was just about seventy-two hundred, seventy-five hundred, something like that.
Seven thousand five hundred thirty dollars.
And we'd funded them once, I think, they paid us about three times, and I think then we have funded them once before.
I'll make a motion to approve three thousand.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a, a motion and a second to fund the Fair Foundation at three thousand dollars, is there any further discussion? All right, all is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All is opposed? All right, motion passes.
Now it's for three thousand, you said?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay. All right, so bear with me just a minute, I gotta change a few things on the spreadsheet so you can-
That forty thousand, that go under, um, uh, maintenance?
Correct.
Where that contract's at Rory?
Correct.
Actually, the, that contract is, uh, I believe through the Board of Supervisors, um, the, the portion for the courthouse is actually paid though, through the Sheriff's Department.
I understand that, but it's not in your budget?
No.
Okay.
No.
And then Rory, can I have the screen as well?
So we increased it forty-four thou- or-
Forty thousand.
Forty-three thousand total?
Oh, yeah.
Compared to what it was before we walked in.
Yeah. Our money. All right. Let me know if you can't see that, um, but really what we're looking at is a, is a point three percent increase for urban, a one point nine percent increase for rural, uh, combined total, you're looking at, uh, increasing the levy rate point zero eight eight zero nine, which is point nine percent, um, your total tax asking increase for urban is fifty-two thousand four fifteen, and your total increase for rural is eighty-one, for a total of one hundred and thirty-four thousand one thirty-one, which is a point three four percent increase.
So taxes on a hundred thousand dollar house on urban would be less than, wouldn't it?
Yes. So, again, bear with me, cause I-
I think ag is the only one that went up again.
Yeah, and that's because of the rollback, yeah.
Is it ag, is there such a thing as ag, and then there's, uh, rural residential, is that a correct term?
Mm-hmm, yes.
That went down, didn't it?
Yes.
So with the example I use with my house, my county portion in dollar amount is relatively the same.
I'm sorry, what was your question?
I use my house as an example, uh, my county portion is relatively the same.
It'll drop.
Unless you had ag property, then it'd go up.
Not my small lot.
No, it'll, it'll drop.
We checked that zoning?
Yeah, really.
So the effect on a hundred thousand residential property, you don't scan down to what that is? Which is kinda typically a measure, a measure for us.
I think we had a decrease last year in urban, I think we've had a decrease this year.
So, so you have a, you have a decrease of ten dollars and forty-eight cents, or a two point nine, two percent decrease for your urban residential, is what you're looking at right now?
Almost a three percent decline.
Correct.
Rural residential?
About a thirteen point three six percent, so, or, excuse me, thirteen point three six dollars, two point three eight percent.
Yeah.
And then ag went up another, was it six, seven dollars?
Well, last time, last time we spoke, we had those placeholders in there, since then, we've decreased those placeholders, so it's not as much as before, but they are going up two point five two percent.
Two point five? And the only way we can adjust that one is through the transfer?
Well, no, yeah.
One of the ways.
One of the ways, absolutely, um. Yeah, otherwise just decreasing the overall budget or-
So overall, the budget from last year to this year is a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollar increase, and a lot of that's just due to the rollback and the way it all shakes out, or?
Yeah, I mean, a, a lot of the increase really is coming from salaries and benefits, uh-
That's true.
Yeah, they didn't have valuations that helped us this year, like we did last year.
Right, the, the valuations are really what's driving the, the decrease, um, but we are asking for a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars more than last year. What's helping the, so we are gonna hit the super majority, um, between the general fund and the rural fund, but what's helping us is the mental health levy decreased quite a bit, as well as our debt service levy decreased quite a bit. So, those, those two things are offsetting our general and rural fund, um, increases, so.
All wages union was two and three quarters?
Uh, for the across the-
Contracts, and then everybody else is two and three quarters across the board.
Yes, for across the board, everybody was at two point, uh, seven five, depending on what step you are at for your union, um, obviously, some people got more than that.
Insurance went up or down?
Two percent.
Two percent.
That's not bad either.
No.
I remember we put twenty-five percent in.
Yeah, a couple of years ago. Yeah, a couple of years ago, yeah.
So that's, that's really excellent there.
You know, like I've said in the past, I mean, we're in a position, we're in a good, strong financial position. Other communities aren't seeing, they're envious of the position we're in, but a lot of this credit goes to the passports for bringing us to this point. And there's sustainability here, in my opinion, and that's important as we look five, ten years down the road. So I give the passports a lot of credit. With this board, we had a lot of good discussion. We had our differences, but we all came together collectively to be productive for the county.
We usually make those speeches as we get closer to the end.
Does that mean you're inviting someone for supper tonight, or what?
I'm not going to share my tequila.
That's right. But it is due in large part to our staff. We have really excellent staff that I think really look at their budgets.
It's a team effort. I'd always ask them, our department heads, fellow elected officials, a lot of the operating budgets came in at zero, and then it trickles right down to our employees. So really, it's kind of a team effort.
Oh, it definitely is, yeah.
And that's making quite a few adjustments on a lot of classifications over the last three, four, or five years of bringing them up and made a lot of progress. Infrastructure in our buildings, we've done just about everything will ever be done, no.
No.
Bridges, we've replaced a lot of bridges. We're still in the process, roads. Our biggest problem right now, obviously, is that winter, like we had last year with the gravel roads and the frost boils, and a lot of residents were upset, but the only thing we can do is kind of continue working on it, and hopefully, the winter will be a little kinder to us this year. So far, Brian, looking at the roads, I mean, kind of get a feel on how they may, how they're holding up and everything. I mean, we're going to go into March here pretty soon.
We hope it turns out well.
I mean, when did a lot of the problems show up? Was it in the spring?
Last year was February, and then obviously with the...
Was it? I mean, you could have a complete different year from last year to this year, or you could have the same. It's hard to tell.
Yep, that's, that's what we have to try and plan for.
I do, I do think we've accomplished some good things in this budget. I'm particularly excited about the additional social worker in the jail that's going to help serve our mentally ill population even better. We're certainly improving the safety on our roads by paving Grundy County Road in this budget, and that's, that's going to be a big thing that those folks have been waiting for for a long, long time. And I think we're treating our employees fairly, fairly well in this budget as well. And so I hope that we, in order to continue this strong financial position that Blackhawk County has, is my hope that kind of immediately following the certification, starting in April, that we start having discussions about our strategic kind of capital plan and how we wisely invest reserves over the coming years. We've got a number of really great proposals to look at, everything from, from the Health Center to, you know, well, the various projects Conservation's going to have over the years. And I think that by getting it all down on paper, what, what's coming at us over the next five and ten years, we can have a smart plan of how we wisely invest some of that reserve money.
It's good, it's good to have a plan. You can't, you don't have a crystal ball, so everything could go opposite next year, the year after. What's been kind to us, too, is our interest rates on our money. I mean, compared to what we had ten years ago, that's a big difference right there. So there's a lot of factors, but again, we were there once. We could be there again if we weren't careful. So just take her one year at a time, I guess.
That's right. James, is there, oh, I'm sorry. Is there any action that you need from the board today at this point now?
I don't need any action, but I do just want to reiterate that when this gets published, when we get to the table on the fifth, we have to have a supermajority. So if anybody has any types of issues or anything like that, please let me know, and we'll iron those out.
Speak now, forever hold your peace?
Yes.
And it's going to get tight.
Excuse me. No, go ahead.
I did let him know yesterday that I made a mistake on my date coming back. I'm getting back to fifth, but I'm getting back late in the afternoon.
Okay.
I went to be here for the whole...
When is that hearing, the first one?
Yeah, you might want to review those dates with us.
March fifth.
March fifth.
Fifth, Thursday.
Thursday.
And then the second one, if I had to run?
Twenty-fourth.
And we, we could change March fifth, but we...
We can't change March fifth. No.
You can go lower, you can't go higher.
No, we just can't change the public hearing.
We can't change the hearing.
So it has to be on March fifth.
What was that, Grant?
Yeah, I just... We thought you were talking about the date, but you were talking about...
No, 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 no. I'm a budget.
No.
Okay, sounds good to me.
So we'll need a supermajority on the fifth.
Correct.
Of only four people.
And you have to send things to, I think, the Port Cities, the paper that's got the tightest timeline?
By tomorrow, yep.
So you do that today, then?
Yes, yep.
Just in case something happens tomorrow.
You know, he's going to go through this now and prepare it, and there's always a good chance, there has been in the past, that some of the numbers could change. So I don't know if we need to meet if that happens, or we're just going to allow him to, to, you know, it could be minor, but it could be some big ones, you know? You never know there, because I know James, in the past, when he went through it, there was some changes.
No, you'll know by Tuesday.
Oh, yeah.
Can we have that by the end of the day?
Yeah, I'm going to be working on it. Well, I'm going to be working on it for the rest of the day.
Soon as possible.
I was just wondering, because, you know, those numbers can change. You know, he can put something differently, so...
Yeah. Right now, we, I spent most yesterday inputting numbers into New World, running reports this morning, and they're matching up. That's kind of what I'm going to be doing for the next few, few weeks, making sure everything's perfect. But especially today, I'm going to make sure that the, that the general and the rural are, are true numbers and true max, and...
I guess I would like to add, though, I said, "It's good to see that we can, we decrease taxes, but that will make it difficult for us in upcoming years. We're going to have to have this two percent, one-hundred-and-two percent, and when we see years that maybe need to be more than two, that's going to impact our citizens." So I said, and I guess enjoy.
Pretty similar to last year, really, if you look at it.
I know, but last year, we didn't have that one-hundred-and-two percent that they held us to, and then you have to have an extra resolution in there.
I'm not sure the purpose of it, but apparently, them people know.
They said transparent to the taxpayers.
I think they think they know. I don't think they actually know.
I don't think they know.
But it's unfortunate, yeah.
Another way to control the, like, our account.
Well, they're not really controlling it, but I don't know what they're...
It's a, it's an anti-growth.
Yeah.
You know, it punishes communities for growing, and so what they're thinking is on that.
See you at next year, Brian.
Yes, we will.
Thank you, James.
Yeah.
All right. If there's no further discussion, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I thought, Nafisa maybe was here. I was going to say, as part of the budget, I was going to say, I think, were you planning to speak or talk a little bit about your project, or the... I know you said you weren't yesterday. You commented you were going to be here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning. No, I just wanted, if there's any additional questions, I know Supervisor Chaka, you weren't here during my presentation, but I think one of, I would like to know the process in terms of work sessions, what additional information the board is requesting, and just information that I can prepare to present to you all. My greatest concern is, at the end of the day, the data is going to continue to see our health outcomes, and so I want to be sure that my, the Board of Health and I myself, as the Health Director for the county, when I'm asked these questions by the public, I also can respond to. And, and it's just, our infrastructure is not conducive, and so I'm very flexible for any solutions that the board is willing to, to listen or to provide. I, I'm open to it, but it's, it's very disheartening when we see the data. Yolanda, you bring a very good point about mental health, and I've heard comments about the duplication of services, but the reality is there's a criticality in, in the needs. And so the Health Department is not, we're not to duplicate services, and that's what we've been doing for the past three years, but it's more of assisting people to navigate the system so that when we hear a veteran not being able to get an appointment, what does that look like, and how do we provide those services? So it's, it's more of, what's now our response to the community as you look at the data, the rates, and the needs? On February eighteenth, we are going to present the results of our community health survey, and I just, I just want you all to be aware, and so we can work together to find just a good approach to address this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And I, I do believe, well, maybe plan on having those, those work sessions start the first week of April after this budget's certified, so, so folks can, can think of in that meantime, what, what questions they have.
My questions are more twofold. I think Nafisa did an excellent job, given the information from her side. I have a few more questions, but I will wait on them. So right now, I'm doing some research on the outside, also grappling with the dollar amount yet, talking to people out there. But as far as the timetable, I mean, you can set the timetable, but if I'm not ready, I'm not ready. So the rest of you can discuss it, and we'll go from there, because it's a, it's a big thing.
Well, yeah, it is. I think it is to be done over a period of time.
Whether I'm going to have everything, or anybody else can have everything they want by the first of April, you can have the work session, but...
I, I think it's just identifying, knowing what your, all of your questions are by then, so it's, it's not that...
Yeah, not that we'll have the answers, not all the answers.
Yeah, my questions are really outside, not here, other than I do have a few for here, but...
No, when you say outside, you mean what? I know what you're saying.
Outside sources, just doing some checking with other counties, and also resources here in Blackhawk County, so...
Okay. Fair enough.
So again, I, I can't put a target on a work session. I mean, if you schedule one, you schedule one, but I don't know what that magical date would be.
Well, I think anytime we're sharing more information than any of us want, this is going to be helpful, but... So I look forward to putting together a list of some of the things I wanted, because obviously, I've got some questions still, so...
Budget time, there's a little bit more exposure out there with the people, the taxpayers, because they pay a little bit more attention when it's published and stuff, and that might be the time of good discussion on them on this expenditure, if the county ever went down that road, so...
Well, that's what I think. We do owe the public a lot of discussion on it yet, so happy to do that. I think we did ourselves.
And duplicate, I'm not sure where Nafisa was going with the duplication of services, but you can have all the duplication of services you want throughout the community, and it still may not be enough for what, what's being done, but you've got to be fiscally responsible with the taxpayer's money, and that's what I'm going to be doing. That's what I'm, I'm told to, being fiscally responsible with taxpayer's money. And when I, I'd like to see us sit down with People's Clinic myself and see what they're doing. I stopped over there yesterday to talk to them, and their services that are in place there that, and I, and I was at, had my physical yesterday at the VA and was made aware of some things that you were talking about, the embarrassment of STDs, about people. I, I still can't understand how they would be embarrassed, because if they're there, they're there for a reason, and the reason is to be taken care of, and it's just like out at the VA, you go in there, you're, you're being seen for different things, and there's different things available there. Come to find out, they send condoms out to veterans that don't want to come in to get them.
We do, we do, we do. So I just want to make sure, because the Health Department, we have a very good relationship with our healthcare providers. So People's Community Clinic, Mercy One, Unity Point, and I, at the Health Department, have all worked together to do the community health needs assessment. So I don't want to take it out of context in that I don't know what's going on with People's Clinic. I, we have a very good relationship. Part of the rhetoric in terms of duplication of services, and you're very right, we can have all these services, but if people don't understand how to use them, they're not going to do that. So I think that's where the Health Department, you see a lot of our healthcare systems leaning onto us to assist in, in regards to that. So I just want to really clarify, because this is a public meeting, we, we have a very, very good relationship with our healthcare providers, and it's not to take from them, but it's actually to look at our county and, and strengthen our system that we have. So I just, that's, that's very important for us.
Well, I think you've identified it in your report. It was kind of like the gaps. It was filling the gaps, making sure that there wasn't duplication, but utilizing that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Any further discussion? I believe we did have a motion adjourned. We have an act. Moved and seconded. All in favor of adjourned, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. This meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.